Thank you very much. 6.0 addition corrections and modifications to the agenda. 6.1 addition to the agenda item 11.03 approval of personnel items. 7.0 citizen statements, there are none. 8.0 approval of agenda. May I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for April 20th, 2016?
Seven.
Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Motion carries seven zero. Resolutions, there are none. Communications. The next regular board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, May 4th, 2016 at 7:00 PM at Central Middle School with the anticipated close session at 6:00 PM. 10.02 board liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports that anybody would like to share?
I have one.
Good.
So, right before this meeting, President Jacob and I met with the PNEA Steering Committee for negotiations, starting to reflect back on this year and how we can improve on the process for next year. So, Dr. Sortino, you will be stepping into that role and they'll have you busy on the steering committee, starting, they're gonna have a bunch of dates they're gonna put out to the rest of the board so we can look and make sure that those jive with our own calendar so that we can be at those important events.
We'll get those dates to you. Thank you. I'm sure you will. A lot of work. Any others?
The Student Services Subcommittee met. Myself, Dr. Sortino, and Mrs. Applebaum attended. Met with Chelsea Watson on that and talked a lot about the idea of proposing or looking into an advisory program for our middle school students. That was wonderful discussion and so it's still ongoing work, but it talked about the idea of how we can better support our students in a more structured, scheduled manner, helping them to get more individualized attention when it comes to advisory and counseling and having, so there's lots of different ways that this can be accomplished, so all those discussions are still taking place, but I was particularly very enthused about the idea of this possibly going forward and whether or not it could transfer into other grades yet, we're still not sure, but we'll start with middle school. Thank you so much for your time on that, Chelsea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jacob, I think we have a wonderful partnership with Manchester Arts, a growing partnership. I just want to say on Saturday night, they participated very actively at South High School. I think Patrice, is Patrice left? But Patrice was part of Spectator as I was at the Pops concert and they were very active in promoting activities, the partnership we have, especially with the South area. Then on Sunday, I went to the Lyceum, which is the older building in the corner of Manchester and 141, and the Manchester Arts invited several of our West and South students to perform. These are students going on to state competition in music. It was a wonderful array of about an hour and a half of some wonderful music. So, I just want to thank the Manchester Arts and hopefully we can recognize them at some point. They've really grown into a real major partner with Parkway and our music in particular. And Chris Becker, Band Director at South conducts their summer program, so he, Chris is certainly a participant in that.
I love hearing one, we're involved with the community like that and our kids too. Many of us, Monday night, were at Project Parkway, our last one for the year, and Desi took us on a magical ride through all kinds of numbers and things and it was, it was nice to hear about the listening tours and some of the, in fact, we participated, one of the difficult things that night was among all the different words that came up that described what the Project Parkway 2.0 should be, he challenged us to pick three. And, of course, they're compiling that data, but it was, it was a good time and we appreciate your efforts there. There are two Subcommittee, well, there's a Student Services Subcommittee meeting on April, that one already took place. Okay, there are 11-0 action items. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented on April 20th in the April 20, 2016 board materials?
Seven.
Thank you. Is there anything to be pulled to action or closed among the consent items? Okay, no. In that case, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. And our next thing really on the report is 15.0, a budget work session. Call on Patty Bedborough and Brian Whittle.
I'm gonna move the microphone here. Good evening, President Jacob, Vice President Sortino, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Marty and Mrs. Peasel. Tonight, Brian and I will be presenting all of our work that we've been compiling on the budget since we last met on the subject in December. Some of our changes, you will see them be highlighted, so some things, just with our enrollment, some assessed valuation, some of that has been changed since we last spoke on this. So, tonight, we'll start with looking at our operating revenues. So, with this, we'll discuss some of our upcoming challenges. We'll look at assessed valuation, the property tax collection rate, our consumer price index. We'll also look at some other revenue sources too. We'll also be focusing on our operating expenditures too. So, we'll look at enrollment projections, which of course then lead to our staffing needs, which then leads to our salaries and benefit needs. We'll place the two together, we'll look at our fund balances, and then we'll finish off by looking at our five-year projections for operating revenues, for operating expenditures, and our fund balances. So, to begin the evening, we'll look at assessed valuation. So, looking at some history and then some of our projections for the future. As you, as you can clearly see, we still have not rebounded from the recession, even with our modest growth and our new construction that we'll go into in a little bit more detail. We're still not to the levels that we had in assessed valuation value before the recession. Each year, we're gonna continue to ask the board to take into consideration recoupment that we recalculate when we're setting the tax rate. And you can see that we are starting to recover from that market, but that new construction was very, very slow in fiscal years 2012 through 2014, and we're just now rebounding from that. So, our predictions, we're using, have modest growth based on our past history and averages to look for, it forward into the future, plus looking at some known new construction projects. So, then to look at the calcula, the collection rate, so this is the rate that we receive cash versus the rate that we actually set. So, what complicates this and makes it volatile is actually the protested tax settlements that are received. We're forecasting conservatively, knowing that there's still many claims that remain. If you recall, even in the current year, we had over 25 million that were filed under protest, just in tax dollars. While we're working with the Assessor's Office to have improved reporting, we still have not gained that yet. Increases in the collection rate will help, of course, in, in increasing our revenue received. And at this point, we don't have confidence in changing our collection rate by much, but for next year, we are looking at increasing that from 96.75 to 97 percent. Each quarter percent increase in that collection rate is about $400,000 in operating revenue. So, so far this year, we have not received the actual release of funds that were paid under protest that should transpire in the month of May, from what I've been told. And with that said, we're still estimating our current value to be that 96.75. Our next component of our tax rate is our consumer price index. And for most years, this probably hasn't even been on people's radar screen. You know, not too long ago, we were receiving 3.5 percent, 3.9 percent, but if you look at the recent history, we went down to 1.5 percent two years ago. This year, we had a .8 percent, but going into fiscal year 17, we will have only a .7 percent increase. And what does that mean? That impacts us because our existing property, so not our new construction, but just our existing property, we are capped at that new growth by only the .7 percent. So, if you think in terms of just a few years ago, we had 3.5, so we're talking about one fifth of that growth. So, of course, then our new growth and our revenue comes from our new construction values. So, you can see why that has become so important. With the property taxes being our largest revenue source, we want to make sure our largest expenditure sources don't grow at a higher rate than that revenue source so that we can continue to, to build our fund balances. We are planning for future expenditure growth, but, oh, sorry. So, when we look at our new construction, we pulled historically over the last few years, we've worked through files that we have with Chapter 100, construction that is currently going on. We've looked at residential, new construction of the past few years, taking that as an average growth and then use that as our future growth. So, when we're looking at fiscal year 16, so this current year, part of that new growth that we receive in red is from the RGA building. So, that was a new building that's out Chesterfield Parkway. That was actually built with a Chapter 100, so we actually received only half of that revenue growth or half of that assessed valuation growth, but that was our main component of, of the commercial growth. When we're looking at next year, our commercial growth, we're looking at two properties, not large in size, but one being the facility that is off of Vance Road that formerly was considered a nursing home, but through the Assessor's activity, he actually went and fought in courts and that has then been considered a partial in-profit center. So, we will actually be receiving some assessed valuation from that property. Another property that we have is the Mitec Building that was occupied beginning in October of last year, so that'll come on our, our rolls. When we look at next, or the following year, sorry, fiscal year 18, we should have the Monsanto complex in the Chesterfield Parkway area that should be added into our assessment rolls. We estimate that to be about 45 million. And then we also have the Watlow Electric Building, which is on Lackland Road. That should be added and that's about a $3 million growth. We also have other projects like Worldwide Technologies, the LHM Development of Hotels at Dorset and 270, and the Watlow Project that'll have what's called pilot revenue. So, we will have about $200,000 each year in growth from those, so that's a payment in lieu of taxes that we'll be receiving. And in 2018, we've heard that we may have the new construction from the Bungie Corporation moving off of Timberlake Manor. So, up next, I have Brian Whittle with me and he is going to discuss the operating revenues in more detail.
Hello, good evening. So, based on everything Patty had just said, you know, to get to our property tax number, our assessed valuation, the CPI, and the 97 percent collection rate, you can see we're looking at about, estimating 164 million in property tax collection next year. That's, you know, our single largest source of revenue. And it is a decline from this year, but that was expected because of the big residential recoupment of about 6 million we did last year. So, you do see overall, we're, because of that drop in property taxes, we're expecting an overall drop in revenue, but again, it was expected and that full 6 million is, you know, that was to increase our fund balance this year. Another big decrease is in earnings on investments. We've, historically, we used to get interest with our property tax payments. That just hasn't happened. It hasn't happened, I want to say since, say 13, 14, so this year, we took it out and that 200, 199,000 in interest is what we plan on making on our operating funds this year from investing the funds when we can and keeping the money in the bank. There's also a increase in Prop C, and that was, you know, we base that off estimates the state gives us now, saying how much they're gonna give us per ADA, and I think it's around 965 next year is what they're estimating, so that's what we put in there. We back it down a little bit from what they say, just to be conservative, because I always think with, and Patty too, with, when you're budgeting revenues, you try to be conservative. You don't want to budget this huge number and then spend it and then have to come to you next year at this time with our hat in our hands, so. And then the other increase in our local revenue, it's down the bottom, that other loco, other local, the 100, 820,000 increase, part of that is our payments in lieu of taxes for those businesses that certainly aren't, they're new, they're not paying property taxes, they have the Chapter 100, they make some payments in lieu of taxes, and we're estimating 300,000 from that next year compared to about 100, 120 this year. The state and federal are going down. That may seem alarming, but that is grant revenue going down. It was known that it was gonna go down for the state, it was the vocational tech ed grant, and a decrease in that grant means a corresponding decrease in expenditures. So, it's a, it's a neutral effect on our balance at the end. Same for federal. The drop was larger there. We had a Title I, we had, we had a special one-time carryover, about every three or four years, we're allowed to carry over this large amount, and then we spend it this year. So, the title revenue was more in fiscal year 16, but so were the expenditures. So, next, or, next year, we're expecting lower revenue and lower expenditures, so no big harm to our fund balance there. But, like I said, overall, it's just a decrease of 1.23 percent, and that was because of the recoupment this year. Otherwise, you know, an apples-to-apples comparison, we're looking at about a $3 million growth in revenues. And this slide's always interesting, it just kind of points out where our main source of funding is. Almost 90 percent of our funding is local, and of that, property taxes makes up about 71 percent of our total funding for the district. So, and then I'm gonna let Patty start talking about enrollment and leave that into the expenditure discussion.
Thank you, Brian. On this slide, it depicts the enrollment by each of the categories. When we look at resident numbers, that does include the Phase 2 students that are actually funded with ADA through SSD and not in our state funding, but we also have the VST, so our transfer students, and other which represent our children that are attending our school from Normandy and Riverview Gardens. When we look at the graph, we've not only included the same graph that we included in the fall, which are all projections from Dr. Tyson, we've also showed an expected decrease in enrollment from the possible changes with the VIC program. So, the superintendents are still debating how that's truly gonna work out and how that's gonna impact us, but as you may recall, we actually collect revenue for the participation in the VIC program, and that estimated for next year will be $7,000 per student. So, the decline in enrollment will not impact us next year or the following year, but it may have future considerations, and we'll keep you posted as all that information is derived. But as you know, we look at the enrollment projections not only as an overall total number, but actually where they're going to be at schools too. Mrs. Joyce takes that information and she makes her staffing projections. So, that all plays a very, very important part in our budget development. So, when we look at our staffing breakdown for next year, so this is certified teaching staff that essentially is classroom and classroom support. If you look at the total number, we're essentially flat, but we are adding a TA position, a part-time TA position that essentially makes a 1 FTE plus, a teacher position at early childhood, and those are both funded from our new MPP grant and our new classroom that will be located at ECC, and also with tuition that comes in from that classroom. The reduction that you see from the administrative interns does not mean that we have decreased support in our elementaries, but it does mean that we have two elementaries that have grown past a size that they now need to be changed into assistant principals, so we have taken care of that. Also, I know from last month, there was recommendations from the middle school report to add social workers, so we're already working on that initiative too. We saw an opportunity where we could add a social worker position and we could reduce one of the counselor positions, so we kind of did a trade. Certainly, we won't, don't want to necessarily continually do that, but we're, we're trying to maximize our, our FTE distribution on that. This next slide predicts or actually displays our staff increases. So, all of our union agreements have been ratified and salaries have been set for next year. You may notice the slightly larger increase for the nurse contract. As you may recall, that was a, an agreement that included a 9 percent increase overall over three years. So, next year has the largest increase of a 4.5 percent. The following year has a 2.7 percent, and the third year of that contract has essentially a step increase with a little bit on the top step then, and that accumulates to 1.8 percent. So, Brian's up next and he is gonna talk about the overall operating expenditures.
Yeah, as you'd imagine, salaries and benefits are our biggest expenditures for our operating fund, and based on the staffing Patty just showed and the raises, which, you know, 3 to 3.09, a little bit higher for the nurses, you would expect to maybe see a salary increase of around 3 percent, but we only have 2.2 percent increase in salaries, and that's, of course, because people do retire and then we bring in people to lower salaries, so that, you know, that's positive for us because we couldn't really afford to just constantly have a 3 percent growth in salaries. Our benefits, you know, that is growing faster than salaries, and we, we're planning on capping any medical, dental, you know, those parts of benefits at 5 percent increases, as far as what the district pays for those for employees will increase 5 percent, and that's about half of our benefits. The other half of our benefits are things like employment taxes, Social Security and FICA, and then, of course, PSRS and peers and retirement, and that's, those increases are gonna be based on our salary increase because it's a flat percentage of salaries. So, instead of having a full 5 percent growth, we're figuring a 3.23 percent next year. And one other note on the salaries, you know, in prior years, the growth hasn't been as much, but that's because we had the early retirement incentive, so there's more turnover and that just kept the growth lower, whereas, we kind of think that pushed a lot of people to retire at the end of last school year, knowing it was the last year of the early retirement incentive, so we didn't see as much retirement this year, and of course, not all those numbers are final yet, but. And then, supplies and materials, you see that big drop there, but as you know, in the fall, we come to you and say, hey, the buildings didn't spend this much money, they just weren't able to get the projects done by June 30th, so they had to carry forward expenditures, but we start thinking we're gonna have around 16.7 million in expenditures from a zero-based, and we'll know more next year about how much the schools weren't able to spend and want to carry forward. And we're also, the supplies and materials, we're still figuring on lower fuel prices. We are conservative there and then energy costs being lower, but then there are new expenditures like the new evaluation system, that is all into that number. So, you know, we had the revenue slide before and then a 229 million in expenditures, so, I guess I should, here's again the graph, you can see our benefits and salaries make up about 85 percent of our operating expenditures, which, you know, we're a school, that's what you'd expect, it's, teachers is, should be our number one expenditure. So, this is the big slide, it is what happens when we combine those revenue expenditures projections. As you can see, we are planning on a .25 percent fund growth, which, from the 18.16 to the 18.41. To do that, we had to have a net gain of a million dollars to get there. And, you know, we, it's not easy to get there, but we went through, we went through our revenues, looked at them historically, what's the best number that we can realistically achieve that's still conservative? And then same on the expenditure side, we looked at areas like where can we cut overtime, you know, where does that make sense? And what can we do with benefits to just try to contain that cost and make sure we get the .25? And thankfully, we're there. All right, and then, this is revenues all funds. This includes debt service and the capital projects fund. The big increase from just the operating funds is in property taxes because debt service brings in about 22 million in property taxes, and you'll notice that next year, we are looking for the second phase of the bond issuance of 44 million. So, you see a huge increase from one year to the next, but almost all of that is it because we're having the bond issuance planned for next year. And here's our expenditures all fund, you know, the top part of the expenditures, salary benefits, purchase, supplies, that was all, those are all operating. Then we get into more of the non-operating expenditures, which is capital outlay. Of course, that's so high because of our bond project, and then the other part is debt service. Both the capital outlay and debt service does include an increase in expenditures, a for the new debt issuance, which should add about 3 million a year in debt payments. We don't know that number yet, we don't know the interest rate, when it'll be issued, you know, will we make one or two interest payments on it next year or not, but conservatively 3 million, and then we'll get down to a total expenditures next year of 285 million, but a lot of that is in our capital projects. Otherwise, we're around 250 million is our kind of non-big project expenditures. So, and then here is our ending fund balances for all funds. Again, you can see the operating one at 18.41. Debt service, you know, a slight growth, and that's just because we're gonna issue the debt kind of mid-year and then start paying it back. I think as we get into future years, you'll see more of that fund just breaking even year after year, which is our, you had a long-term plan, of course, you don't want to have that balance lower. Capital projects, we'll get a little more into that in the five years, as you can see, that fund balance keeps decreasing, which is gonna mean in future years, we have to put money into that capital projects, especially for items like to pay for school buses. And then the bond issue fund, that again reflects the new bond issuance and our planned expenditures for next year, and then going forward, we'll slowly pay down that fund until we're done with all the bond issue expenditures. Okay. So, here we are, this is our five-year forecast for revenues. What we did here for, again, property tax is our biggest one, so I'll probably spend a little more time focusing on that. We are factoring slowly increasing the CPI, increase from .7 this year to 1.5. That's still lower than the historical number for CPI, so I, me and Patty both believe that's very conservative, but we wanted to be able to give you a five-year forecast that, you know, what happens if we don't have that big CPI increase we've been used to. The Prop C revenue increasing about 2.8 percent a year, which is in line with what the historic increases have been. The federal growth is relatively flat, same for state, that's, but again, if federal or state were to increase, that would mean there's a corresponding increase in expenditures, so that is neutral on our ending fund balance. And then, most of the revenues, we do predict to stay mostly flat, you know, if you, if you were to dig in to say that other local, you'd see one revenue source that we're increasing a percent or two, or the payments in lieu of taxes are going up based on what we know, but for the most part, the revenues are staying flat. The VST revenues, as Patty mentioned, we are forecasting those to decrease as the enrollment from there decreases, so that is, you know, we have all these increases, but then with VST going down, that is a struggle to maintain an overall revenue growth, we have to make sure expenditures stay in line. I think overall, as you can see, the increases are about one and a half percent annually, which is a little less than what we've seen historically, but that's good because that means we're budgeting conservatively, because, you know, with the VST decrease, that 1.5 is a realistic number to look at going forward, so it's important we keep our expenditure growth overall under that one and a half percent. Which, as you can see on this next page, we have forecasted our expenditures to stay under that one and a half percent. We're looking at annual salaries on average of increasing .9 percent, which is in line with what we've, we experienced historically, especially in years where we have the early retirement incentive because it pushes the overall salary decrease lower, and we're looking at benefits growing, the health, dental, vision, growing at 4 percent instead of 5 percent a year, and then the other half of benefits, again, are just gonna increase along with salaries. And we're keeping purchase services, supplies and materials flat year after year, just the main tip, make sure we can give that .25 growth. And then, you know, that brings us to, the big important slide is, what do we, what is our ending fund balance every year? As you can see, we do manage the .25 growth, but on top of the revenues and expenditures I just discussed, I do want to draw attention to the transfer to capital projects. As I mentioned earlier, that fund balance is going to decrease, so we're gonna have to start moving money from our operating funds into the capital projects just to make sure we can purchase new buses, and that number, that's just an estimate right now, we don't know, you know, with the sports I just discussed, I do want to draw attention to the transfer to capital projects. As I mentioned earlier, that fund balance is going to decrease, so we're going to have to start moving money from our operating funds into the capital projects just to make sure we can purchase new buses. And that number, that's just an estimate right now. We don't know, you know, with the sports marketing agreement we have, maybe we'll pay off those scoreboards earlier. It might put more money into that fund that would allow us to decrease that overall change. I think I'm going to turn it over to Patty to talk about our long-term.
So, one of the projects Brian did over the past couple of weeks is he did a deep dive into our archives to come up with our history of expenditures and revenues and laid that along with our fund balance percentage. So, as you can see, gradually in years that we had greater revenue than we did expenditures, our fund balance increased. But, how quickly our fund balance decreases as our expenditures exceeded our operating revenues. It didn't take long for the downturn, and it was a pretty sharp decline. So, what we're in the process of doing is rebuilding that fund balance. So, when we look, you know, Brian just reviewed everything that he used for the projection. So, our pretty, you know, conservative outlook because right now, we're not really seeing that the CPI, that Consumer Price Index, is going to increase at an exponential level to get us back to that 3.5%. But even when he ran calculations and he used a CPI that gradually goes to a 2.15%, and historically, we had like a 2.2% in average. Looked at a collection rate increasing to 97.25, so only .25 as an increase over what we currently are estimating. Looking at Prop C, an estimate increase of $10 per weighted ADA in lieu of our current five. But our historical average is about $20 per weighted ADA increase. Community ed, currently, we're budgeting that as flat going forward. But if we add $200,000 a year into community ed partnership with that, when we're looking at fund balance, we also look at, okay, what can we add in expenditures? That allows us to grow our salaries from that .9% increase to a 1.2% increase. So, remember, that doesn't mean that salaries are only 1.2% growth. It means they could be a little bit higher and then offset by those turnover savings. Also with that, we could afford a 2.5% increase in benefits, which currently, he's using a 2.1% future growth. So, the main story or the main caution that I provide is that we have to be very, very strategic in the expenditures that we add and the salary growth that we have. It should not be higher than that growth percentage of our revenues. So, we're hoping that we have some exponential growth in our CPI and our collection rate, but at this point in time, we don't really see an immediate recovery. Our challenges that we are, you know, really facing on a day-to-day basis is how do we integrate the innovative classrooms, et cetera, and new programs and still keep the same budget? So, we're going to have to sometimes give up something that we currently do, you know, reevaluate it in order to make improvements for our students. Energy costs, we know that we have implemented numerous projects in order to save energy, but we know that our energy sources still have an increase in the cost of that energy. So, sometimes, we're offsetting that increase with some of the savings that we're doing. So, certainly, we want to maintain our deliverables with our sustainability efforts. Enrollment growth, we want to, you know, enrollment growth means new staffing, means more staffing. So, we certainly want to remain strategic in our placement of staff and what that staff looks like. So, this year, some of our challenges with our current budget is not necessarily our increase in homeless transportation, but the steadiness of that homeless transportation cost. So, we still have continued budget overruns just with the transportation. Most of us think, wow, the economy has recovered, that really shouldn't be an issue, but it is an ongoing concern. I know Will Rosa is involved with an initiative along with other transportation directors to look at other sources of possibly combining transportation efforts in order to reduce that homeless transportation cost. Also, we have an escalation this year in our legal fees, too. So, some things are just completely out of our control, but that's why we have fund balances, correct? So, we definitely have some future challenges to overcome, but I think you know that we are a team that really works collaboratively together, and hopefully, we can meet those challenges. Any questions?
We do have some challenges, and I'd like to talk a little bit about the protested I think the average citizen doesn't realize how it impacts us, and we have absolutely no control. And also, maybe you could talk about that process just a little bit and also mention the interest on the protested taxes that we now have to pay back, isn't that correct?
It's not as bad as it was a few years ago.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, potentially. So, we do have that current lawsuit that has been filed, that potent, that the current protested taxpayers that have received settlements, they have done a class action suit or a multiple suit to us, to many tax recipients, and that's yet to be heard, correct?
There's a lot of people here in the audience who maybe have never heard about protested taxes. Maybe you could just, could you just help them understand what we're talking about?
Absolutely. So, what protested taxes are is essentially when you, you, a taxpayer, receive your tax bill. So, whether you're a resident, an agricultural holder, personal property, or you're a commercial holder, you do not agree with how the assessor has valued your property. You're able to protest that tax. So, what happens, you could just go directly to the assessor's office and file that, but what we have found is there is actually firms, corporate firms, that are out there that actually target corporate taxpayers, so corporations, et cetera, and make deals with them, that they will protest the taxes and they will split the protest settlement. So, the law firm will essentially operate at no cost to them. So, it's zero out-of-pocket for that taxpayer, but they'll, they'll split the difference, if you will. So, if, let's say their tax bill was $1,000, and then through the settlement, it comes out to be $750, they will actually each split 125. So, 125 to the taxpayer, 125 to the firm. So, that taxpayer is at no loss and has no, no loss, he's only to gain if he goes forward with that protest. So, this began as a very, very concerted effort in 2005. St. Louis County is still working through numerous, numerous settlements. We have essentially caught up maybe about 70%, we think. But even in this current year, we had 25 million of our taxes, so just over 10% is actually held right now currently with St. Louis County and waiting for a release. So, those were actually paid under protest. So, it's ongoing. Now, the county does have until 2017 to essentially become current, meaning that everything needs to be settled with the State Tax Commission, with the exception of a two-year period. So, we think that cycle is almost complete. Our current payment, we actually had a positive payment, but our payment in the month of February was actually a negative payment. So, that means that there were still settlements that they withdrew from our payment. What we're currently still not seeing in our payment remittances is the difference between what's being paid to us and what's being taken out. The only thing we see is the net amount that is provided to us. Working with the assessor's office, they have promised us reports that we will see the actual tax payments and the actual settlements, but currently, we are not seeing that.
We don't see Mrs. Jones's Terry Streets results.
No. We receive a report the end of the year currently. And on a HAC basis, we can ask them to pull a year-to-date report for us so we can see the properties that are settled by property. But, at this time, we're just doing that on an annual basis. So, we're taking then that information. We're able to recalculate our taxes for each of the years, and sometimes, that enables us to have a recoupment. So, what happens when we have a recoupment, there's a portion that is able to be recouped from the commercial rate or from the personal property rate or from the ag rate. But, for this last year, our remaining portion of a recoupment actually hit the residential rate, even though it was not residential taxpayers that did the majority of the protesting. So, we in St. Louis County work with a blended rate. So, we have multi-taxing rates for each of our classes of property, and then, we essentially have a blended rate that is part of a calculation that derives then the split of the rate, too. So, it's very, very complicated, but when, the end result is when the commercial property holder actually does the protest, has a settlement, the burden becomes on that residential holder, or at least a part of that. Now, if we flipped and we were, let's say, Rockwood that has a single rate, that same thing happens because they have one rate that is assessed to all of their property owners. So, whether they are a commercial holder, a residential, an agricultural, or a personal property. So, that same mechanism is happening there. It just feels more of a burden on our residential taxpayer simply because we break out that rate separately.
Does that mean there will be any recruitment revenue that we could consider in this next school year?
So, not at this time. I do believe we have about 2.4 million in assessed valuation that we've run on reports so far, but we have not ran that through the formulas yet. Last week, we met, both Brian and I went to Rockwood, looked at their schedule that they, their Excel spreadsheet that they have built that goes back to, I think, 2005, 2006. It was ourselves and Clayton School District that were there. So, they provided us kind of their Excel spreadsheet that they can make it easier, I guess, to calculate the recoupment because right now, we have to go into the individual files for each individual year and then bring those totals forward to see what that recoupment is. So, we're hopeful that that's something we can work on in July, once we have that final report from St. Louis County, and then run those through the formula. So, we hope to have that information to you as soon as possible so that you can take that into consideration.
Thank you. And congratulations for getting the fund balance up .25.
Could you go back to previous slides for a minute?
Absolutely.
No, I'm not, I don't pretend to be a CFO, but I think this is a wonderful chart. I know people may have a little hard time seeing it. I want you to note something that really was vivid to me in talking to Patty. Look at the years 10, 11, and 12, and notice the difference between the blue line and the red line. And look at that, did the fund balance? And I think we told you, and we were going through the, some of the difficulty my first couple of years superintendent, that we were going to hold the line, that blue line is always going to be least equal, if not over. So, we pledge to you. And that's when I heard Patty use the term conservative about 25 times in her presentation. Superintendent sleep better at night when they have conservative CFOs.
Sort of board members.
Sort of board members. Social for the community. But you'll notice, so our plan is, and you need to hold this to this board, that we need to continually hold that blue and the red line either equal or, you know, a little bit over. Look what it does to fund balance also if we manage well, it also increased fund balance. Brian or, I think Patty's giving you some credit for putting this together. This is a wonderful display, pretty vivid of really some history and what we need to plan for to be, you know, really making sure that we're watching all revenues, all expenditures, but also that fund balance line. It's really a great chart, and it shows what happens when you suddenly let red line goes over a couple of years. It's not a healthy venture. We have some challenges. You know, the economy is still, as Patty said, and again, Patty and Brian are pretty conservative, but, I mean, the economy is just not yet been friendly to us.
Not rebounding yet.
And not rebounding where we need to. And hopefully, it'll continually get better. But we have some challenges in the protested taxes deal, like you said, are continually challenged. But I really just want to congratulate Patty and Brian and her staff. You know, people like me would like to spend a lot more money and be a lot more innovative, but they really put the brakes on. Desi would like to spend more, too. But it's hard, but we can still be innovative, but we have to, like Patty said, we have to make some tough choices. You know, we can, we're going to have to be able to look at every position that comes open, and we try to do that and look at what we're doing and what we can cut back on to be effective and still be innovative and maintain a balanced budget.
Yeah, we thank you, too. I think this is the first time ever in our history that we can remember that 2.0 increase in GDP would be considered a recovery. That would be considered weak almost any other time in our history. So, hopefully, it's not the new normal. Hopefully, we'll see some stuff coming back in that 3%, 4% range. And maybe you can make more than 1/10 to 1% on here.
That's right. So, well, and once we have actual fund balances that we could invest longer than just a nine-month period, of course, we'll have that thing called interest again, too. So, not only did we lose the interest that we received on delinquent taxes because we're not really receiving revenue as delinquent taxes, but we've lost that whole thing called interest on investments because, of course, when our fund balances dipped below 20%, we had to start borrowing money by the end of the year in order to make payroll. So, we, you know, that's why our efforts are so strong to build the fund balance, too, so that as our interest rates are increasing in the market, that we're not spending more and more just sending it to the bank. We want to be receiving that income as interest income and not paying it out as interest expense.
Borrowing money, then, correct?
Correct. And we are still projected to borrow money in the end of this year, too. It's just a little bit less than we did last year.
You know, there, about that dip in that line, this precedes Patty, but we got a warning from, you know, those that, Moonies, that if that continues, we're going to lose our AAA bond rating. Mark Stockwell kind of alarmed me one day when he came into my office and said that. So, again, that's another danger. We have a AAA, and that's vital, again, for our people tuning in or watching the board meeting. You know, Patty, it's pretty vital, isn't it, for interest rates?
Oh, absolutely.
Especially as we go out for bond work and...
That lowers our long-term interest costs. The higher our bond rating is, and of course, AAA is the best, so... And Moonies, Standard and Poor's, the last time they rated us, they rated us with that AAA, not only necessarily looking at our fund balances because relatively, they're low as a percentage, but truly, they consider our residential rollback as part of our fund balance, too. Because at any point in time, in the non-reassessment years, we could utilize part of that rollback and actually use that as increased revenue.
Well, I would just sum up, is, this is a positive report, and as you're watching other school districts, you know, a couple in the area around the country, certainly next door in Illinois, with, I mean, we really need to be so conscious of the finances and the trust of the taxpayers. And so, we, this is so vital that we have strong leadership in our financial area, and Patty and Brian and their staff really are providing that. So, I think it allows us all to sleep a little better at night, knowing that they're really daily on watching us very, very closely.
And one thing I think I missed, too, is when we went back to that salary slide, we actually have currently, it looks like flat staffing, but we do have six positions that right now, Amy is using as contingency positions. So, if we just staffed at what she needed now, we'd have a negative six. So, we do have a little bit of wiggle room in case there's unanticipated growth, but you know how Amy, she doesn't release those positions until the bodies are actually in the seats. So, where, you know, that's a little tougher on classroom management. It certainly helps in our budget endeavors. Any other questions?
Questions for?
I just have one that's related or somewhat related. In reference to longevity of teachers employed, normally, the, you know, it used to be at the end of 30 years, you know, you could retire and you still can. I'm just curious, is there a growing trend for teachers to stay beyond 30 years? I mean, is that increasing year by year at this point?
I do not know exactly how many... I do not know exactly how many staff members we have that have greater than thirty. I will say that it could be because, like myself, I had children a little bit later than what people, you know, used to have. Like, I had my first child at thirty, so I still have children in college. So, it could be that staff members are staying until their, their children are out of college. But if you want information on that, certainly, we could provide information for just numbers of staff members that are here over thirty years.
Yeah, because that is a cost factor, obviously, in terms of salaries paid out. But, it's not cer- certainly anything that we want to discourage.
No.
You know, because they are master teachers and we don't want to lose them. But, just out of curiosity. At your convenience.
We can do that, and we can include that in a Wednesday memo.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Share that with the entire board. Anything else?
Earnings on investments decreased. So it's no longer projecting interest from property taxes. Is that, can you explain what the, what the investments are?
So, it's actually misleading. That's the Desi line number for that, but it's actually interest. So when a taxpayer pays a tax bill from previous years, they actually have to remit to the county not only their tax amount, but also their penalty and interest. And so, the county keeps part of that interest and sends some of it to us. So when we were originally forecasting for this current fiscal year, last year, we actually had positive delinquent taxes. So we were thinking at that point in time that we were going to start receiving some of that income this year, and that has not transpired. So that's why we tried it, didn't work. We're going to go back to just our basic.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Very much. And Brian, appreciate very much your report and helping us see where we are as a district financially. Thank you.
Thanks, Patty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sixteen-point-oh, call for a special meeting. There is none. Seventeen-point-oh, the next anticipated closed session will be held on Wednesday, May fourth, two thousand and sixteen, at six P.M. here at Central Middle School. Details of the closed session will be posted within twenty-four hours of the anticipated meeting. And may I have a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries seven-zero. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.